Welcome back everybody into another backtesting session. In this session, we're going to start from Monday, August 1st. And let's see, I don't know how many weeks we're going to cover in this episode. Depends on how fast they go and yada, yada, yada. So let's start with the beginning on Monday. We have some actually some PMIs, we have some reports. So we can expect to be quite an eventful Monday. As you can see, we have manufacturing PMI, ISM manufacturing PMI. And yeah, it should be impacting. On Tuesday, we have the Joel's Job openings. On Wednesday, we have further PMIs. Services now, not manufacturing. Thursday, we have the jobless claims as always. And on Friday, ah, okay, it's the start of August, so it's NFP week. So we don't have ADP. Now, looks like, looks like we don't have the ADP this week. Yeah, okay, so. Yes, so this is basically quite an eventful week. And we're going to see it together. So. Like this, as always, now you go down, you go down. And we can start over here. So this is already New York session opening. And let's see market structure. So obviously, this is so far our low. We don't have, I mean, most recent eyes, but of course, as always, we're going to wait for the 8:20 AM Eastern to take a possible, to take the first, any first trade. So so far, we have these traders. Let's see, as you can see, price is breaking below, not giving any readers so far. Yeah, this would have been a win. So this would have been, would have needed to be an impulsive win, an impulsive entry. But we have need these readers over here. So let's see if we can see price continuing down or retracing. Yeah, this is only 30 pips. I don't like that now it's failing to move down. Also now we have these eyes and this might be a possible buy trader idea. If we were not in this trade, yeah. So as you can see, this one would be a loss. But this one would be a win. For the reasons that I just explained, it's a breaker readers of these eyes. Now the price is continuing bullish. So we might have this, the old lows are now the new most recent eyes. So we might see a continuation bullish. Yes, not in this case. In this case, that would be a loss, right? Breaking below these lows, but now I will wait for New York Stock Exchange opening and the actual S&amp;P PMI and the one at 10 AM Eastern. Let's see. Okay, possible readers over here. Yeah, and let's see the news. So the first one is basically unchanged. Not really impacting. And now at the 10 AM candle, what do we have? We have better employment, new orders decreasing. Manufacturing is better than expected, still lower than previous one. So a little bit of a mixed bias, I want to, I love to see. Based on the perception, my trade idea, based on the perception, the liquidity graph was accepted to these lows. So we can still consider it as a trade idea. Not really convincing, these sales might, we might want to take this retest of these lows for sales. Which would end up being a loss. Over here, we don't have any readers after that, we have this one. And I think we're going to see it in the next one. I mean, it's getting later during the session, but let's see if there is enough volume for us to take home another win. Yeah, okay, now we don't even see it, so the price was not moving after that. Now we're coming into Tuesday. Tuesday, slow volume. We said that we have Joel's Job opening, but it's later during the day. So I would love to see, okay, now the 8:20 AM Eastern, now there is some volume coming into the chart. We might have now our readers of these eyes for possible continuation bullish. Or the most recent eyes. Yeah, prices are simply, okay, yeah, we tested these last eyes. So now we could have had this entry. Looks like it's going to be a loss after that, let's see. I don't like, unless it really pushes up. I don't really like these, these price actions so far. Yes, yeah, there was not enough momentum. So this one is a loss. After, while you can see price broke and retested these lows. Now let's see, we have this retest, we have this, this readers of these lows. Now let's see if we have a continuation bearish or now we break above on the upside. Coming into the new four hour, this might be high risk high reward end of pullback entry. Otherwise, I will wait for a breaker retest of the lows, if that's the case. So looks like I will probably take this trade. Yes, that's quite good. Very good, okay, immediately going into profits. Then what do I want to see? Okay, now we have at 10 AM, the Joel's opening. Okay, New York Stock Exchange, now we have these lows for possible continuation lows. Possible eyes above there. If we want to take a risky trade, that would be this one. Yes, which would actually be a loss. The price reacted at the same highs as, as previous one. Now these could be possible sales, but we are very close to the 10 AM candle. I really didn't want to take it, but the setup, it was quite clear. Retesting these last lows. And yeah, now we can wait, yeah, it was 15 minutes before that, so not really. We're not like five minutes from the news. Now let's see the impact of the news and also let's see the news. Okay, so coming into the 10 AM candle, okay, that was the win. Okay, so the Joel's opening are coming with a quite a bad decrease. Not really keeping up with expectations. So I'm expecting a very bullish push if the impact is quite strong. We might have a readers of these eyes, readers of these eyes or any other PSA that we can create. If we have readers of these eyes, that might be good, as you can see, we have this candle tapping it. And going into profits, very good. So yeah, that was a trade idea. We might have possible continuations with the readers of these eyes or these ones. Okay, not a strong price action. Price then is retesting these lows, as you can see, retesting for possible rotation now. And yeah, I would not then consider this for sales. Let's see, I would probably take a retest of these lows. And for example, this one. Okay. Which will go into profits. Yes, we are in the same, the same thing. And that's, that's it for also Tuesday. London closed and yeah, okay, so let's continue with Wednesday, Wednesday. What did we have on Wednesday? Okay, PMIs later on. These lows. This possible eyes. This might be a possible trade idea very early. Okay, going into profits. Now I want to see a breakout and a retest of these eyes. Otherwise, if we break below this low, I don't know if they're, they're going to create a market structure below these lows, for sure, we could take sales. But yeah, looks like we are slowly, we were slowly trying to break up, but yeah. This for example is the readers, you see, we have these last lows. And this might be a very aggressive entry for sales. Price by still bounce from here, but yeah, after this rejection, I will be playing the failure to break above. Okay, yeah, and that will go into profits. That's great. As you can see also, breaking and retest of these lows would have been very great and profitable as well. So this is simply high risk high reward entry. And in the future, this entry will give me further pips than the, the one that it can give me, this one. Now what I'm looking at is, this one was already retested, this one was already retested. So I want to see further development of the price action. Okay, this might be high risk high reward entry. Oof, very great, that's great. And probably we have also some very good numbers. Yes, so some good numbers, that's why we got the push, the bearish push. Also, you can see how clearly it was after the news was released, the retest of these lows was so damn good, yes. Also, the retest of these lows was so damn good. For possible further entry. Not a lot of volume, but might, we might see a continuation down, yes. Wow, that, that was a quite a nice day, I would say. And yes, four wins, that's a, that's like a 12% day. That's quite crazy, let's see how it will end. So we would take these, we are now these lows. As you can see, breaking, retesting these lows. Would be the safest entry. And then the volume, I think is dying down. I don't know if we're going to have, now we are retesting these lows. So this might be a possible high risk high reward trade idea, but we're coming into London close, so not taking it. But let's see if it will continue down, no, no point in taking these trades. Do it being so late. Now coming into Thursday, we had jobless claims as always. So let's see at 8:30 AM Eastern, the impact of it. So so far, we have these eyes. We have so far these lows. But of course, I want to see the news before taking any entry. This might be a very good trade idea. Is coming much worse, so I'm expecting, is coming much worse than previous, but almost as expected. I'm still expecting a bullish push. Yeah, the reaction is actually non-existent. We are breaking below these lows. We might want to take this high risk high reward entry on the opposite side of my, of the fundamental bias. And now we are bouncing from the key level and that might be bad. But as you can see, there is no need to worry. Okay, so now this one was a win. Now what I want to see is a retest of these lows. For possible continuation down. So now let's see if we have the retest of these lows. Almost, 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 almost. So we lost the idea, the trade setup. Was it, we actually retested these lows on the left hand side. But yes, if I was to be flexible, I mean, that's quite far away from here. So yeah, that would have been the, another winning trade idea, but yeah. I think I could, instead, if I simply, I could have entered over here because that's the retest of these lows. And also for this law, so this would actually be a good trade idea. Let's see if we have enough volume to the end of the session. So this, and this 70.78, 70.74, yeah, there'll only be 40 pips. So yeah, doesn't really matter too much. So now let's see over here. It was a Thursday, so as you can see, we went the opposite way of what the fundamental was saying. And let's see now, here, ah, it's the last part. So okay, so now this one would have been a loss. Now wait, 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 wait. Ah, we still had a lot of time, plenty of time. Okay, so let's continue, let's go back. And we add this loss then, because I took this one. So we have this one, which is actually a loss. And that's okay. And baba, okay, only goes like 40 pips. Then we have a readers of these eyes, bam, on the upside. Which would have been a good trade idea. Then we have this, what's the word, readers and continuation bullish. This entry, I mean, if I wasn't in this trade, this would have been a very good entry. Breaking above these previous eyes, retesting and continuation up. I'm hoping, yeah, that the price can simply continue its way up. So that's, okay, oop, perfect. Now we're coming into the 10 AM candle, let's see, yeah, we have another retest, but we are just getting our TP. Luckily, because the price then is not really moving too much. And let's see now if we're, yeah, we're already having this retest of these eyes for possible continuation up. Don't really, not really liking this volume, I think it's, yeah, I'd say too big. Yeah, as you can see, that volume is not really great for entry now. And there is not a lot of direction. So I would love to see if we have a breaker readers of these lows. Quite, yeah, not really, yeah, I mean, I like these lows for readers. Let's see the price action, yeah, very testing. Yeah, I see, I'm seeing the price action weakening over here. I take a sell and we're going to see. Okay, and I'm going to take a loss and that's absolutely fine. You know why? Because I give myself a better chance. That if I took it over here, it would absolutely be the same. Yeah, and that's, that's it for the day. Okay, so now we are moving into a Friday. Friday is the 5th of August and it's NFP day. So NFP has to be, we have to be very, very cautious about it and not to risk too much. So we can see that the NFP is heavily, heavily positive. Unemployment is decreasing, nothing that can hold dollar from pushing up. So far, I'm not really expecting a retest of these lows, might have a retest of this one. But most likely, we might take high risk high reward entries as soon as possible. Yeah, like over there, let's see. For example, over here, at the, at the first pullback, we could take the first trade idea and that's, that could be the continuation down, let's see. And not, nothing much to say in this screenshot, but that I had to take those screenshots in order to, to be impartial. So as you can see, we have this retest of these lows that we can take. Let's say that I take this retest on the opposite side after seeing this PSA being created. I'm taking this one and let's see. So now it's 30 pips and I wanted to go back up, yeah, and that's a win. Further trade idea is actually this one, the retest of these lows. We might take, I mean, we are still in this trade, so we just got our TP, but this was another possible trade idea. Which will go into profits, then we have the readers of these lows multiple times. So we might take this trade idea. I'm seeing that the volume is not really pushing that, that hard. We're coming into a new four hour candle, so let's see what is going to happen with this trade idea. It's actually going into profits pretty nicely. That's good, we have now these last lows, the possible continuation down. Okay, and that's another win. Okay, let's see if now we, we trace, because now if we break above these eyes or super high risk high reward above these eyes, we might have some bullish push. Yeah, for example, this very high risk high reward entry. Yes, that's great. And remember that price can easily go down, it's not like I take this screenshot and I know it. And yes, now we might have the continuation up, I might be looking for the readers of these lows. Yeah, which is eyes, okay. Yeah, I was running down, yes, so that's good trade idea. And even if it's a losing idea, it's fine, that's okay. Very good. Now for possible sales, what am I looking at? Possibly these lows, yeah, obviously safe only below that, now let's see. Okay, now this break above of these eyes and the readers of this one. If we get a nice retest, we might take a continuation up. Yes, so let's see, this is the trade idea. And. One, two, three, four, yeah, that probably is a win unless I can see it later in the other screenshot, that is not, but I think it's very likely to be a win. I mean, one, two, three, four, five wins and one loss. I think it's, it's a pretty good trading of the NFP, I would say. So let's see over here, so we took, ta, ta, ta. No, we took the 10 AM, we're talking about, yeah, of these eyes and we already took it. So let's see. Okay. Yes, so that will be absolutely a win. Now we might have a continuation again, moving on with this retest. In this case, that would be a loss because it only goes like 20 something pips. Now let's see, are we failing to break above? If we are failing to break above and it's a, it's a Friday, we might have some sales playing out. Yeah, for example, this would be high risk high reward, but it's getting also London close. So let's see if we have this trade idea playing out, yeah, no. So that's, that's it for the session, right? And this was the 5th of August. And now we're coming into the 8th of August. Yeah, after the NFP, yeah, we have the CPI on Wednesday, so let's just give me a second for a quick break and then I will be back for the second week. So let's get back to work. So Tuesday, okay, so we were looking at Monday, nothing happening. Tuesday, nothing happening. Wednesday, we have a big day of the CPI. Thursday, we have the PPI and jobless claims. On Friday, we have the Midwestern consumer sentiment and some export prices and whatever. So not really a dense week, but we can't ignore the fact that on Wednesday, it's going to be a huge day. So now let's start already from New York of Monday. We can see now, we have these lows and these eyes as always, not really that much. There you go. The price is breaking below these lows, it's the start of the session. To me, when the price is like that, it's always a little bit of tricky. And also we are now, we have these lows, which we might be retesting it. Probably take this entry. Okay, wow, very slow Monday, 100%. Around 20 pips and then pushing into a loss. Okay, possible breakout, but yeah, not really trusting this trade idea. The only thing that I could have taken was the break above these eyes. And these eyes as well, as you can see, that's the only trade idea that we could have taken after taking this loss. But the price is not, yeah, this entry, price is breaking above, convincing me above these eyes and then we have that confirmation. I would probably, if I have to be honest and transparent, that would be the last, the new high. So in that case, the entry would be a little bit above that, still will go into profits, so. That's, that's okay. Okay. One, two, three, yeah. Probably it's very, very close, a very close call. But let's see, now let's go into a Tuesday, Tuesday, not really much to be expected of. We are now breaking above these eyes, I don't know why I was going that fast. We might have this trade idea. Let's see if it plays out, yes, it plays out, it plays out. It did play out, very good, that's very cool. Yeah, leave it like that. Let's see now, the price action, possible confirmation, I'm not really trusting our retest of these lows. After this time, the key level has been retested. Now let's see if we can get a breakout above this low and a retest. Ah, yes. Might also be a loss and that's okay, it's already pushing down, yeah, not really great. But still, that was the trade idea and that's good to enter. Remember, let's recap, we don't have anything, right? Yeah, not really anything impacting. And let's see, we are looking for sales when and where. We are, we have these lows, so if we retest them, we might take a sell. We have these lows for possible further, further entry. Yeah, this candle might be our trade idea, high risk, high risk, high reward. High risk. Okay, now do we want to take these buys? So. Let the perception develop. Let the price action develop a little bit more, so now we have this one. This trade idea, this idea is whole AF. We took this, we took this. Okay. Yeah, very sketchy price action, not giving us a full retest of these lows. If I were to enter at the PPL. I think that will still be okay, otherwise I might take the retest. So the retest of these lows, but it's getting late. Yeah, it will go into profits. It would actually go into profits, the retest of these lows, as you can see, not this one, this one, great. That's okay, and then we can continue into the following one. So 10th of August, big day, CPI. So we have to move slowly, because of course now I wanted to take, to leave the CPI start, the minute of the CPI nearby, in the center, so that I'm not biased. So that's it, as you can see, this is the CPI, I think, yeah, I think we can't really do much. CPI, I think, so let's think it's low. Yes, it's decreasing, huh, that's why spike up, already 100 something pips. That's because of the expecting, the market expecting that the Fed will not raise the rates that much. So let's continue to the next one. So we add this spike up, there's no real price action PSA to take buys from, we have these ones, but let's see. We are retesting these lows, they could be a possible high risk high reward sells. Now I'm looking for buys above this level, yeah, so this will be a buy, looks like it's going to be a loss, but yes. Now let's see, yeah, this is also the last low, so if we wanted to take sells, be below these lows. Yes, let's see if you can give us a further retest of this PSA, okay. So if we wanted to enter over here. Yeah, that would be a win. And as you can see, safest entry would be below there and it will continue down. So that we will play the trade, so 1, 2, 3, so that would be a win over here. And we could have taken this retest of these lows over here, for 20 pips, yeah, and that would be another win. Okay. So 1, 2, 3, and 2, 4. We have also this trade idea, the same one, we need to take it. Okay, in this case, that would be a loss. But it's okay, we don't, we don't know how far the price will trend, it's not our job to understand it. You can see now that price is breaking, retesting these last eyes, last eye. So here we lose, so let's see if we can have a breakout above these eyes. Or we are continuing down, for continuation down, I would want to see a retest of these lows. Yes, and that would be the case. I don't know how far it went, probably we're going to check it in the next one. So let's see the next screenshot, it's right after New York Stock Exchange opening. So that was it, New York Stock Exchange is opening. When was it? Was this the entry? Okay, yeah, was this one, okay, so this is the entry, we will need the price to go at least over here. Ah, damn it! 1, 2, 3 and a half, so I will check later, I think that's a loss. I think I actually entered over here. Yes, so that's absolutely a loss and let's see if we have a retest of these lows. Okay, do we want to take this high risk high reward entry right before the 10 AM candle? Okay, so far it's okay, I'm going to watch it later. This is 95.5, 91.2. So I'm going to watch it later if this is a win. I mean, later, I mean, in the next screenshot, what is this one? Okay. Okay, 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 so we took this buy, so we are talking about this buy over here. I want to see if you can push a little bit more, please, okay, yes, that would be a win. Okay. Almost. Okay, so now we closed off also Friday. And yeah, I think we have quite a, quite good two weeks. And I hope you guys enjoyed, and I see you next time.